Good evening and welcome to the January 11th, 2016 work session of the Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have one item on our agenda. It's a discussion of possible solar options for city facilities. And to lead us in that discussion, Deputy City Manager Dennis Ensley.
Mayor and Council, as noted on the slide, we're going to talk about solar options. I'm sorry about my voice. I'm hoping it will hold out through the presentation. Feel free to stop me at any point if you have questions. I also have Michelle Potter, who's also here from Park and Rec, because we're talking about some of the parkland areas, and Rod Kuzmerik, who's from Public Works, who may be answering more specific questions. Should you have something regarding that? I will note that we're really looking at the solar power purchase agreement. We didn't really look at purchasing the solar panels directly from a manufacturer and installing for a couple of reasons. One of those, as you'll note in the description of what the solar power purchase agreement is, it takes into account tax credits. And as a government entity, if we did the project by ourselves, we would not qualify for those tax credits. The tax credits can only be used by a taxable entity. And so that's how the purchase agreement works, is that separate tax entity actually secures and installs and operates the solar panels, and then gets the tax credit that we would normally, if we could get it, get it. But it doesn't work that way. In addition to other items, kind of led us to believe that probably the best option would be this power purchase agreement, is really our expertise in this field is not very deep in terms of facilities. That involves not only just the installation and working with the utility company to actually do the net metering, but also the longevity of maintaining the solar panels. You know, they're anticipated to last at least 20 years, and in some cases, a little bit longer than that. And we just don't have the staff on hand to actually do those type of operations and maintenance. We did meet with three separate providers: SolarCity, Standard Solar, and Sun Edison. And we kind of got a feel for what they were looking for with their purchase agreements. Again, almost all of them required kind of a 20-year purchase agreement with five-year extensions. Some of them would like to go out as far as 30 years, some go 35. It just depends on the type of project that they're doing. They also really like to combine any building-mounted facilities with their ground arrays. And those need to be somewhere between three to five acres. Most of them like the five-acre size, because they have some limitations when you're looking at tree canopies and other items that restrict how far back they have to set. So they end up with only about three acres or four acres of actual panels.
Can I interrupt you there on that point? Because this was something that, I guess, took me a little bit by surprise, as we were doing some of the background research for the options that are out there. Do we know if other jurisdictions in the area that have pursued this, I know that Montgomery County is either in the process of pursuing, or has already recently pursued it, if they also had to commit to doing a ground array? And if so, how big? And why exactly the vendors require this as a sort of a combination with rooftop solar?
Partly because of the costs that we actually pay for electricity. It's a little bit different than the residential structure. We pay only 10 cents a kilowatt hour. So the payback is a lot different than if you do a residential property. In addition, I think they have a lot of projects, and so they're looking at a sense of scale. They also don't want to maintain a lot of small rooftop units unless they have to. All the other communities that I've known who have done it have done some type of array. And some of them are as small as five acres. That's about the smallest I've seen. And many are larger than that, or might have multiple arrays.
Do you know how big the Poolsville Array is?
I believe it's over five acres. I don't know that off the top of my head. But it's... So the school districts that have worked on it, they typically have a little bit more land than we do, or land that's not forested, which will be one of the issues that we'll talk about a little bit later on. Again, most of them like to see something that's generating as a package of about 400 kilowatts of power per site. And by site, they mean kind of the combination of all the sites. Okay. One of the other things they look at is how big the rooftops are. And I'll get into the square footage that we have. But they like to see about 50,000 square feet of rooftop. Some actually like to see even in excess of that, 60,000. And then, for some of the parking lot arrays, they do look at something that only gets kind of light vehicular in terms of no truck traffic, because they try to mount their arrays at about 8.5. They've done some at 11 feet, which would account for some truck traffic. But really, they're looking at just standard vehicle traffic in those type of parking Some of the limitations we have with regarding to the sites in terms of the arrays or locations, we have conflicting uses: parkland, athletic fields, event space, tree canopy or forest coverage, topography, steep slopes, access is often an issue, and then the power grid limitations. They do have access to the power grid, and in some cases have to install additional transformers to make it actually work.
So let me ask you real quick. There's a new parking structure at the Pike and Rose project on 355 in Rockville. And the parking struc... I guess it's not... It's just outside of Rockville. The parking structure there has solar arrays on the roof. It's actually, I think, the first one I've seen along 355 between Bethesda and here. So just wondering, what's the size of that? And what's the output from that site?
So it has about 855 panels on it, and it produces about 265 kilowatts. So that's about half of what they are actually looking for in terms of a total site aspect.
Do you know if the rest of the buildings at that site also have rooftop arrays?
I do not know if the rest of the buildings are. I think they tried to do mainly the canopy. They did get a grant for that. And they did it at the time of construction, too. That was the other caveat.
They did what?
They're doing it at the time of construction.
At the time of construction, okay.
Which is the other caveat.
So the building, the structure's engineered for that as well?
Yes.
Dennis, what's the normal consumption of a building that they put these on? I mean, is it 200, 300, 400? Do you have a...
Again, you're not looking at... The way these products typically work is they're not looking at what the building is using. They're actually doing net metering. And so when I talk about some other sites that you could... might be possible outside of Gaithersburg, there could be an array that the city participates in outside of Gaithersburg, but is in the Pepco region. So they're looking at net metering. How much total are they putting back into the system? The days really of just saying how much is your building using, from their perspective, they don't really care about that. We might care about that if we're looking at some type of solar water. So if you did something at the Aquatic Center where you're actually heating water and using it on-site to do either heating and cooling, but also something that uses a lot of water, you might do something like that. But typically, they're just looking at net metering, what they're putting back into the system.
So it's really different than residential use of solar?
Some of the other limitations are when we talk about the rooftops. You can see here is kind of a list of buildings that we have within the city. I did not include historic properties. So we didn't look at the community museum, or the Kent Lunds, or the Arts Barn, or the train station. Those were all excluded, partly because of the issues that you might have with historic review in terms of putting solar panels on those. They typically range, you know, at the low end, somewhere at 3,500 square feet, which is not very big, up to about 42, which is the Activity Center. And that would be all the portions of the roof at that facility.
So even the flat sections, okay.
Do we have a rough estimate as to the relationship between the square footage of a roof and the amount of energy it could produce? I realize it all depends on many factors. The pitch, and how much sun, and what direction the building is facing, and all of that, but...
Without going into specifics on each one, I could not get them to commit to what it would do. Some of the things to keep in mind is you typically can only use about 80% of the roof coverage to actually put solar panels on, because you have other HVAC equipment. You have roof vents. You also may have parapets. Any building that has a parapet, you have to be 10 feet back from the parapet, because you have shade issues. If there's surrounding tree canopy issues, it's all so specific to each building. And that's why it's very difficult to do. Again, south-facing is always better. So you know, like the Activity Center, it has a gable pitch roof, so it's probably not the best roof, because you have two different directions that you're actually facing your solar panels. Whereas something that's flat, like the Public Works facility, is going to be easier to manipulate the direction and the angle of the panel. Because the angle makes a lot of difference, too.
Dennis, you mentioned that the thing at Rockville had 800 panels, gave 265 kilowatts. Do you have any reference to that square footage?
No, I don't off the top of my head. I don't know if...
I mean, how big are the panels? Are they two-by-four, or six-by-eight, or...
Usually, the panels are probably not six-by-eight, but two-by-four. So it depends on the type of panel that they use. But they're not very big, because they have to manipulate them by hand in order to mount them, at least for most of the building-mounted units.
Mike?
So the parking garage, the 39,000 square feet, does that include the expanded parking garage?
That would not be on our... We would not own the expanded parking garage. That's private property.
Oh, okay. So we'd have to do a deal with...
So we only looked at publicly-owned land. So there are a couple of buildings that we did not include. For instance, like the Senior Center, we do not own that. And then also GAC, which we do not own.
So is the developer... Do you have any sense of whether the developer's doing anything trying to get... use that for lead points or anything?
I don't believe so. I don't think they're actually looking at that aspect.
Okay.
So some of the things for potential installations that we talked with the providers, and got a better feel for them, and wanted to get some feedback from the Mayor and Council tonight, again, is they're all willing to look at grouping buildings if we provide some type of array site or net metering site. So that could be outside of Gaithersburg's city limits. They're looking somewhere between 400 and 500 kilowatts total. I did make a note, I think in your packet presentation, I had only talked to two of the three providers. I can update you that two of the providers are open to pairing the array site for property outside, and that they would bring the property. That would still calculate into their cost-benefit analysis, and the rate structure that we would get back in return, depending on what site they had to purchase, or if they have a site already purchased. Only one of the providers was willing to look at capital payment for some rooftop sites. Again, that gets a little bit complicated, because if we provide the capital, then you can't use the tax credits. Where it gets very complicated on how you can use the tax credits. The other aspect is, as you all noted, there are a number of agreements between other governmental agencies. But because each site is so unique, we would have different rates of return on each of the properties that we would be dealing with. So there is no hard and fast rule that I could say, okay, here's what we do, here's our rate of return, here's how long the payout would be for each of these types of properties. It's going to have to be based on a selection process. Hopefully, with the guidance that we receive tonight, we can reengage. I think all the firms that we talked to are open to reengagement in saying, here's the sites that we are looking at, or we need you to bring the array, and we'd like to pair it with these other building sites. What's the best option you can provide for us? So to give you an idea of what sites we actually looked at, we looked at city-owned property with five acres minimum, with a 25-foot buffer from existing large buildings, because that often plays into where you can put the solar panels. We looked at a number of other issues, too, when looking at sites for ground-mounted arrays. You know, we took out the Stream Valley buffer. We looked at steep slopes, which in the drawings that I'll show you are areas in red. We looked at areas with forest canopy, historic preservation, viewshed issues, and competing uses are all the things we tried to look at when compiling the sites. We actually started with, I believe, 22 sites. And then we narrowed that down to the sites that are before you. So we basically have Bora Park, the former CPSC site, Malcolm Keane Park, Muddy Branch, Quince Orchard Park, Robertson Park, and Brown Station. And then I'll go through each of these. Each has pluses and minuses, or pros and cons. I can tell you which ones the consultants liked, or the vendors liked. And you'll understand why they like them pretty quickly.
Dennis, we don't have control of the Nike site, right?
Yeah. We do have control... Not the Nike site.
That's... Yeah. So if and when that's turned over to us, would that be a candidate site?
It could be a candidate site, depending on... I didn't really look at the tree canopy, but I would assume it's pretty open. So it would be a potential site. The only other site I didn't include is the, what we call the Edison Park site, just because we've had other discussions about that property. So I did not include that. It is about seven acres, only about four of it's outside of the floodplain. So you're buffering that five-acre minimum that most places like to see. So the first...
Yeah, there's a tree canopy issue by that section, too. So... And you also didn't include City Hall, or Griffith Park, or the parking structure.
And I could talk about some of those, why we didn't include those. I do have some slides later on that weren't in the formal presentation. But if you had questions about why we didn't include, like City Hall, I can talk about why we excluded some of those sites.
But you also didn't include our parking structure.
We did include the parking structure.
On this map?
Well, these are only the sites that are for the array.
These are for the ground.
Not for the other... Okay, yeah, I got you. Got you. Sorry.
So Bora Park is the preferred option for any of the providers that we spoke with, partly because it's the most open. They didn't also like the very front of Bora Park. We excluded that from the viewshed issue of the farmstead. So we did not include that portion as part of the discussion. It doesn't have really any tree canopy issues. There are some tree canopy issues back here, but there would be enough setback to compensate for that. It's relatively screened from residential property. The caveat is it does remove active park elements and event space. So you know, we have cross-country meets here. We have other activities that take place that would be prohibited from using this space if you had an array. The former CPSC site, we threw this in because it's one of the newer sites. Again, if you haven't been out there recently, which most of you probably haven't, all the buildings except for the warehouse building, which is this building right here, have been removed. This is a little bit difficult site in the sense that it's barely over six acres. There are no tree canopy issues, per se. There's a little bit on the sides, but not a whole lot. There are some steep grade issues, which are shown in red. It's very close to residential. So that's one of the drawbacks. Would occupy, basically, you'd probably end up using the entire site. The other issues are there probably are restrictive covenants that we would have difficulty using this totally for an array site, because it is restricted under the federal deed restrictions to use it for some type of park activity. That probably doesn't preclude us if we wanted to do some building-mounted, or some other small array. But I don't think we could cover the entire site.
It was... I know this isn't directly related to the ground-based array, but since we're talking about the CPSC site, there was some reference to the roof of the warehouse building being fairly large, but also being of a kind of a new metal construction. Has there been any further discussion about whether or not that roof is capable of holding solar panels?
Most don't have structural issues, to a large degree, because the panels have gotten a lot lighter. But they do believe it's probably that. It's usually the membrane or the roof material that they're most concerned about. Because again, the way the agreements work is, we're assuming any liability, that if the roof leaks, we have to pay to remove the solar panels, and then put them back. They do not remove them if we have any roof issues. So they recommend that the roof needs to be at least replaced within the first couple of years, before they will even consider a project that's a roof-mounted panels.
Okay. And so how does that apply to this particular building?
It's probably a metal roof, so it's probably okay. I don't think it's a big issue. We don't see any leaks. And it's probably a lot longer life than 20 years, in terms of the metal roof, which will be kind of counter to what I'm going to tell you for the Activity Center, because it's probably at its end of life, or very close to at its end of life within the next three or four years.
Okay. Thanks.
At the Activity Center?
Yes. Malcolm Keane Park, again, it has some grade issues. It's a little bit different in that it's a split site. And most of the companies that we discuss this with were not really in favor of this site because of the split nature of it. It actually isn't adjacent to residential, so it's a pretty good site from that perspective. It is basically tree canopy coverage. And again, most of the providers want us to take care of the reforestation or the mitigation, which means we have to plant somewhere with, usually within the city, or we try to do within the city, three trees for every one tree we remove. So that's the other difficulty with a lot of these sites. They do not include forest conservation areas. We did exclude those from consideration of sites. But these are forested areas, so they would require some mitigation in terms of replanting the tree canopy somewhere else.
Dennis, before I forget, since you had mentioned having to pay for the cost of, say, a roof leak and having to remove the panels, is there some degree of warranty associated with the work for the installation and the equipment? I would assume that there's at least some basic level of warranty for that.
There is some basic warranty for that, that I would assume if the roof leaks at their penetration point, we would have some recourse regarding that. But if the roof, if we had to go back in and repair the entire membrane or the roof structure, that would be on our dime.
Okay. Thanks.
Muddy Branch Park, which is about 10 acres. It's actually a pretty good site from a residential standpoint. It does have a number of steep slopes, so some of the providers were concerned about that. And again, as you can see, it's pretty much covered by tree canopy. Quince Orchard Park, this is another property that the providers liked a lot, partly because of its orientation in terms of it would be easy to orient their panels to it. It does have tree canopy issues, and is very close or across the street from residential properties. We did exclude the portion that has the forest conservation easement on it. This is kind of this little light green line that buffers the yellow portions here. So the eight acres is actually outside of the forest conservation area.
And why didn't you consider the grassy area?
Because we don't own this parcel.
Oh, that's right. That belongs to Menemue.
They would have liked to use that parcel, but that's owned by Menemue, so...
Yeah.
Robertson Park, this is another one that consultants liked. It's probably not one that Park and Rec would recommend, because it would be reusing or taking out existing park amenities. It's not really adjacent to residential, or at least single-family residential. And it doesn't have any slope issues. So those are the kind of advantages. Again, the disadvantages are, we would lose park amenities.
What about the section, the slope section?
This section down here?
Yeah, that section there.
They didn't seem to have any big issue. They may not actually place panels. You know, we looked at parcels that were a certain size, so they may only use the larger portion that was flat, would be my guess.
Okay. So they don't like to put panels on the slopes at all?
They do, but it's not a big enough acreage just to put it there.
Okay.
Again, they're looking for somewhere between three and five acres. And this whole parcel outlined is only about seven. Brown Station, the area that we identified is approximately five acres. We do actually own this parcel over here. But that parcel is committed under existing agreements to use for the CCT operation and facilities maintenance bar. So...
Probably not within 20 years, although we hope so.
Yeah, for 20 years is not an issue. So we did not include that in the analysis. This other portion, we do own, but is not currently under that agreement. Although, if you look at the CCT plans, they actually talk about taking a larger portion even of this parcel here. But because we are not committed, we actually looked at that area also. Again, it's not technically adjacent to residential. There's a pretty good buffer on this parcel here. There are really no slope issues. The tree canopy is a negative. And there could be possible covenant issues. We need to investigate that a little bit more. We acquired it through some parkland agreements. But it looks like it could be used for public use. I just have to have a legal opinion.
Right now, it's all forested, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So really, the only ones I showed you that weren't forested are Bora Park and Robertson Park. All the others have some forest issues. So kind of a recap of the array sites is, you know, we would be required to remove some park amenities, whether that would be open space, or event space, or recreational facilities. Almost all of them involve some type of removal of tree canopy. There are a number that are really in close proximity to residential neighborhoods. We also have the ability, if you so choose, we could participate outside of Gaithersburg in terms of the net metering. And there are two providers who have indicated they have some sites that might be available for that.
Do we know what those sites are?
They would not tell me that until we get some commitment.
I mean, I don't know that it matters to us, but I guess there might be a discussion about whether we would want a site if we were going to go outside the city, that was very close to the city, or it was far away from the city. I guess at the end of the day, it doesn't really matter because of net metering.
It's unlikely, given land value cost, that it's going to be very near the city.
So Dennis, when you say participation in a site located outside of Gaithersburg, participation means we purchased the land for the...
In some cases, they could actually bring the land to us, but they would get the tax credits for building the array on it. But they would also have to, you know, basically work in the cost of the land into the total calculation of how the return works. So you know, they're not going to just give us the land for free. There's going to be some calculation on, not maybe the total cost of the land, but some portion of the cost of the land, or the lease. Because in some cases, they don't actually purchase the land. They just purchase a lease to put the solar array on.
Yeah. They're just doing a long-term calculation of cost to revenue, and figuring out where they can get to the point where they're profitable. So maybe they don't have to charge us the full cost of some cheap land somewhere, but they have to charge us enough to be profitable within the 20-year horizon.
Correct.
Cheap land somewhere that's like Western Maryland or West Virginia, right?
It has to be in the Pepco zone, so...
It has to be in the Pepco area for us to do the net metering.
All right.
But again, it all depends on the parcel they have. They may own it, or they may actually just have a lease. A lot of times, they just do leases, because they don't want to own the land, because then they have to pay property tax.
So can I ask an economic question about all this? From an economic point of view, what's the benefit to the city for doing this? Do we make money, save money? What are we doing? Why are we looking at this, aside from, you know, the obvious environmental benefits?
The hope is that we would reduce our actual fee that we would pay the utility company. And that's going to be based upon the package that's put together. Again, we pay about 10 cents a kilowatt. Depending on how much power we put back into the system, we could reduce that amount. We also reduce fees to some extent, because we're not purchasing power, we're putting power back into the system.
But do we have a number of what these projects look like? I mean...
Again, it's all so specific that until they put the package together, they would not give us a definitive answer of what that fee would be.
Because the parklands and, you know, some of these properties have value to us, you know, that, you know, if we were going to take away a park, say, for Robertson Park, that is used by the neighborhood to save, you know, I'd hope that we were saving millions or something in return for doing that, or else it's not worthwhile.
Over the long haul, we could save quite a bit of money. It depends on the longevity of the sites, and the sites that we would be using.
We also don't have to commit to a specific plan. I mean, you know, saying that we're going to move forward after tonight doesn't mean we're going to commit to any specific plan. It simply means we'll give some guidance, and then staff can work with the vendors to develop more specific plans, and come back to us with those kinds of numbers, so that we can decide in the end, once we see the details, whether it's worth it or not.
Correct. Again, one of the issues is, from an environmental standpoint, we actually purchase renewable energy credits, and we're at 100% already for our current energy usage. So...
Really? I don't think I knew that.
Which is a new aspect. We were able to get a pretty good deal. That doesn't mean it will always remain that way. But at least for this year, and probably next year, it'll be roughly at 100% renewable energy.
Well, we should be shouting that from the rooftops. Well, we should be shouting that from the rooftops, whether or not those rooftops have solar. I mean, that's, because that's a big deal.
So those are purchase agreements.
Yeah.
Well, and then the other question economically is based on on the cost of this technology over time, right? Having come out of the computer industry and knowing that, you know, you wouldn't get a 20-year lease on an iPhone because iPhones are going to be better, faster and cheaper two years down the road, and you're going to want a new one. When does it make sense to commit to a 20-year lease for a solar energy array? Wouldn't the economic benefits be greater a year or two years down the road? What's the right time to commit it? Are you folks looking at the expected change in cost over time?
I think if I could predict that, I probably wouldn't be sitting here.
Well, there's some reasonable history of those kinds of.
There is a little bit of history. The reason these projects are actually economically viable is because of the tax credits. A lot of these projects would not pay back in a period that would be reasonable, you know, 11 years or 15 years, which is what most are looking at. The only reason they're viable is because of the tax credits, which have been extended at least theoretically for another five years. There are extensions in the last legislative initiative by the Congress to extend those even past that, but they do have to make some action on that.
Oh, but the other thing, the technology has improved and the efficiency of the panels has improved. So the cost is actually per kilowatt hour has gone down as well. So I think that's why we're seeing such a surge in the in the construction of these projects throughout the United States.
Sorry. There's also a financial incentive for the vendors to generate as much energy as they can. So they want the panels to be as efficient as they can as well.
They do mostly use the latest technology, but technology changes pretty rapidly in these cases. So with the initial investment, it's unlikely they would come back within that 20-year period and replace the panels. They might after that period if the scale comes down. And again, it all depends on what the cost-benefit analysis is on their part. Because the initial cash outlay is pretty significant.
Dennis, there was an interesting point is only, and I brought this up before on other projects, is the cost analysis is everything's, you know, that's important. If we're not getting substantial reductions, then, you know, why are we doing it? Why would we give up ball fields? Why would we cut down trees? When I drove across country last year, I saw these huge fields of panels. And the last thing I'd ever want to see in Gaithersburg is a huge field of panels. The detriment effect on wildlife was unbelievable. Instant combustion of birds and things like that. We don't need that. And how relative they are, I don't, you know, don't quote me on all those. Those are things that I've heard when people, when I did some studies, especially with National League of Cities, and we talked about some of these things. These are things that were thrown out. But when I drove across, you know, Utah and in those areas, all those huge fields of panels of glass, I'm saying, this can't be environmentally correct. And that's what we're supposedly doing it for. I mean, you know, I mean, the heat generated was alone was, you know, astronomical. You could almost see the heat waves go up. And for us to put that in Gaithersburg, now rooftops, another story. I can, I can get into the technology of that because they're up in the air, they're away from everything. But to put a field that people use, that play on and cut trees down, to put something in that technology is going to change tomorrow, doesn't make any sense to me. And, you know, I looked at it and I looked at it. And when I was driving across country, I looked at those fields and I'll tell you right now, you would never get my support to put the field like that in Gaithersburg. I mean, it was awful.
I don't think we have to worry about it because I don't think we have those kind of
We don't have it.
That kind of acreage available, so.
Right, but.
The other difference is when you're driving across the country, it's pretty flat.
But I can see us putting it in Bora Park across there. I mean, we'd have, I think we'd have an uprising in the city.
Well, I think the problem here is that we all agree, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think most of us agree that, you know, this is far less of an issue when you're talking about rooftops. But we're basically being forced by the vendors. If we want to do this, to find a land array location to go along with the rooftops, and that's the problem. If we didn't have that requirement, you know, then it would just be rooftops. That'd be a different story. So I don't think anybody really wants to put up the land array. I think we're kind of being forced to say, the cost benefit here is, do we want to do something that's environmentally forward-thinking? That hopefully will actually save us money? And if so, is it worth the trade-off of whatever we decide the trade-off will be? Whether it's having an array outside the city or somewhere inside the city or whatever. So that's, that's the tough discussion. But I hear you. I don't want to put an array in a park. I do not want to do that. And so the question becomes, you know, at what point do we decide we want to move forward and at what expense?
As far as guidance is concerned, from my perspective, I'm all for environmentalism. I'm all for saving money, but I have zero appetite for, for taking down green space or park space in the cities. I would like to look outside the city if we're going to look at the green field or field options, purchasing property or whatever the mechanics might be, to have the array established outside the city and then look at urban space here, buildings, rooftops, brownfields, et cetera. But zero appetite for tearing down trees or, or taking away parkland to put up arrays inside the city limits.
Yeah, I mean. Councilmember Spiegel's right. So six months ago, when we really started this initiative, we approached two companies. They both came back with solar arrays at Bora Park and nothing on our buildings. So they have a lot of options, and so they're not looking for small-scale type of activity unless you're on the residential scale where they're actually getting a better rate of return because of the cost of electricity. So two things are competing against us. The fact that we have cheap electricity just based on our rate. And then also the fact that they have a lot of providers or interested individuals who are willing to provide the array sites that then they pair with them to do the other building sites. If you actually ask any of them, they would rather not do the building sites.
Sure, higher maintenance and.
More work.
More work.
So the residential, you know, obviously I'm seeing residential solar go up all over the place. What's the residential rate per kilowatt hour compared to what we're paying here?
I could tell you. I could tell you from my own personal experience because I have, full disclosure, I have solar panels on my roof and I have a power purchase agreement with a vendor. And, you know, right now with my agreement is that I pay about 11 cents per kilowatt hour for the energy generated by my roof as opposed to a total of what would be more like 15 or 16 cents per kilowatt hour from the standard offer service from the Pepco rate.
All right, so they're able to charge you 11 cents where the city's already paying 10. So obviously, that's not a deal we'd be excited about.
Right.
But chances are sometime in the future, and probably not that far in the future, that number would be below 10 cents, at which point it might be more interesting. So.
Or alternatively, the rate charged to the city may go higher than 10 cents from the standard offer service.
Yeah, they would hope that the rate would be higher in order to make it more cost-effective. So as.
Well, that makes it easy for them, but.
Ryan has pointed out, he's actually paying a higher rate than we currently pay without any incentive.
Now, does that include your capital investment?
There is no capital investment for residential. If you do a power purchase agreement, they cover everything. Because their model is by charging you 11 cents, eventually they'll start making a profit, even though you're paying less than what you would to Pepco. The problem is that model doesn't seem to work for municipal governments.
Not very well, just because of the cost of electricity.
Right, because the bar is at a different place. If you're paying, if you were paying 15 or 16 cents and they lower it to 11, that's, you can see how that could work versus we're already only paying 10, so they'd have to presumably come below that.
Right.
So so the idea of behind the array is that we would give them that land for nothing, or how does that work?
Again, typically, they, the two providers that we talked to actually have land arrays available. And again, part of that has to do with the tax credits, that they bring the land, but they still calculate that into their return, the rate of return that they need to get back on the property. So they have some capital costs for that land, whether it's a lease or a purchase, that they're calculating into that.
But I think my question is this, if we provided them with a five-acre site to put a solar array, what would we get out of that? They would, they would give us some percentage of the revenue generated? How does that work?
They would charge you eight or nine cents per kilowatt hour instead of the 10 cents we're paying them.
Right.
Typically, they don't like us to purchase the land because it messes with the tax credits.
Yeah, I understand.
Because of the capital requirement.
I'm just trying to understand the economics of what, what happens if we give them a chunk of land, which doesn't seem very comfortable anyway.
We don't have a chunk to give them. I think that's the other issue here.
So just sort of thinking this through and following up on what Neil said, trying to imagine the scenario. They, they have a chunk of land somewhere outside the city. And there's a cost built in to them, the vendor, for either acquiring or leasing this land or doing something to be able to build an array on this land. They put that cost in. Maybe, maybe normally they would only charge a municipality like ours 8 cents per kilowatt hour, but because we have to cover the cost of an array outside the city, it might be 9 cents per kilowatt hour instead of 8. I'm just making up these numbers.
No, correct.
And they would build it into the cost per kilowatt hour so that they could recover that over time and still be profitable. And it might not be as cheap as it otherwise would be for us, but the idea is hopefully it would still be cheaper than, than what we're paying now.
Definitely if we provided the land, the cost-benefit analysis would be more in our favor than if they provide the land. Because they're going to have to calculate that into their pro forma on how they're working the numbers in the end.
Right, but even you could theoretically, if the numbers work out, you could have a situation where they provide the land, still have to factor that into the cost, and it still ends up being cheaper than the rate we're paying now.
Correct. Otherwise, there would be no incentive for us to do it unless you're looking at some feel-good measure.
Right.
So far, I haven't seen anything benefit to us yet.
Again, part of this will come down to the specifics once we get further guidance on, you know, we've gotten a pretty good idea that council's really looking at trying to partner with one of the firms, if that's the route we take, that someone would bring land to the table either through some type of purchase already or through some type of lease agreement. And then we would partner with them to discuss which buildings they would consider. Because again, it's going to be up to them on which buildings they consider are the ones that give them the best rate of return. So we'll probably throw out, unless I get direction of excluding specific buildings, the full array of buildings and then have them put together the best package they can put together for us.
Well, we haven't heard that part yet, so.
Right, yeah. So on the potential sites for rooftops and parking canopies, we looked at kind of the following sites, and I can go through a couple of other ones, why we excluded them. The ones we looked at mostly with the, the companies were the Activity Center, the Old Town Parking Garage, Public Works, CPSC Warehouse, and then 16th South Summit, which we actually have under contract.
So is there reasoning in to look at the Casey Barnes?
Mainly because of the historic aspects. Most people consider that to be historic property. I do have an image of that. That is one. We would be open if council's willing to look at that one.
It has a long parking lot.
It has, and I do have a photograph of that one.
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking at it here on Google Maps, so.
All right. So the Activity Center is probably the largest square footage we have. We have the building itself. We have some outbuildings that we might be able to do stuff with, although we do have some mechanical equipment issues. There is the possible parking lot. Probably this parking lot here would make more sense than this parking lot. We do have some delivery issues and bus issues. So we'd probably have to have a taller canopy, which cuts into the cost because you have to build a larger structure related to that. We'd probably have to have at least an 11-foot clearance, given that we have buses that come in and use the water park. It's pretty much screened from residential. The big issue with this one is the roof is almost at its life expectancy. We are probably going to be programming it into the CIP in the future. We don't currently have it in the CIP, so we're talking out years of 2021. But before we could do the roof-type structure, we would be required to repair the roof or replace the roof.
And what about the membrane part of the roof, the flat roof?
The same thing. It's all basically at the same age. So the recommendation would be to replace the entire roof. Because we couldn't guarantee we wouldn't have any issues in the future.
And have we thought about any of the structures at the water park?
We have talked about that, but again, some of these have some rooftop mechanical issues that limit the amount of space, so we'd have them look at those issues. The bigger issue is we've talked about this because it's a pretty large parking area.
Right.
Let me ask you about the roof issue in terms of the way this might work with a, with a power purchase agreement. Assume for a moment that we can make a power purchase agreement work and still be a financial incentive for the city using other properties aside from this one. And then in three or four years, we replace the roof. Is there a way to do a supplemental agreement or an add-on to a new property within the city? Maybe you start the 20-year clock for that particular property over, or maybe there's a way to just build it into the amount we're generating? Is there a way to do that? Or would we have to just wait until the end of our 20-year term?
No, I think there'd actually be a way that we could phase in the projects to more coincide with when we were doing roof replacement. In fact, you know, they're not all that excited about doing.
The roof's in the first place.
First place, so if we commit to the array outside the city, I don't think they would have very many issues with us saying, okay, we have a plan in five years to replace the roof. At that point in time, we need to look at doing that project. I think they would still want to reassess the, the cost-benefit analysis of actually doing it. So I'm not sure they would fully commit to doing it. But it could be actually to our advantage, as been pointed out earlier, there may be new strides in technology that increase the efficiency of the panels themselves, so it become more profitable. But I don't see that as a big issue working with them.
Okay.
So Dennis, let me just ask a question related to that. If these companies are focused on the ground arrays and presumably we would say, okay, we're either going to dedicate land or we're going to go along with your agreement to procure the land for this array and we're going to get in return the ability to buy energy at a lower rate. What are we getting by adding roofs, rooftop panels to this equation? Are they going to give us a bigger discount? Is that what we're thinking here?
They would calculate that into the overall package, so it would help us to some degree. Again, if we went to them and said, we don't want to do any building mounted, I think they would be quite happy. It's, it's more of a visual image of the community supporting solar. And that's why we would probably encourage the council to pick buildings that were very visible in terms of that particular aspect. There probably still would be some cost savings in terms of energy cost. But I can't guarantee it without them actually calculating it all out.
So they'd be quite happy and give us a lower rate if we just went with an array outside the city and no?
I do believe they could. I don't know if they're actual, we might have to do one building mounted and to do the net metering. I'd have to talk to them about that.
And would that be advantageous over our current rates, even though we are purchasing 100% renewable?
Again, yes, probably. Otherwise, they wouldn't do it. They're not going to pick a building where we're not going to pick a building that's not going to have a positive impact on the actual calculation. They might propose that, but I don't think that would be in our best interest. And again, it's over the long haul. If you think 20, 25 years for these structures, you are looking at a cumulative cost savings, not so much on an annual basis, but over that 20-year period, there might be considerable cost savings.
I mean, it's still, it still drives the number down. So it's not like you're going to pay more because you added a rooftop to the array. I mean, you may pay marginally less, but it still, it still adds the amount you're generating, which means it's going to drive down cost if the, if the per-kilowatt cost with them is lower than the per-kilowatt cost with Pepco.
Yeah, they're not going to pick a building that's going to drive up the cost.
Right, that doesn't make sense for them. So even if you were to only do two buildings in the city, you know, you could say, yeah, there's a feel-good aspect to it. There's a public education aspect to it. There's an aspect that shows our commitment to, you know, some, some good clean energy policies. It's not like we're going to pay extra for having those in addition to having an array.
Well, is there a minimum rooftop installation that would be required in order to access the, the array at ground level?
I don't believe so, but I'd have to confirm that. Again, all of our rooftops aren't really meeting what they believe are the best square footage. Most of them want somewhere in the 40 to 50. This is probably the closest we're getting on all the projects that we looked at.
I mean, what I'm thinking is that if it does add to the cost to put rooftop arrays and you don't have to put that much, even by paying for or taking partnership in an array outside of the city, you're still adding to the total capacity of solar within the state, which is a good thing. You're putting more renewable energy out there. You're putting more renewable energy out there. So if installing something on our rooftops is simply for show and increases costs?
It doesn't increase costs. I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you. Go ahead, please, finish, I'm sorry.
My finish is, does, why doesn't it increase costs?
It may decrease costs marginally less, but it still decreases costs. In other words, if we're paying 10 cents per kilowatt hour now, and a vendor comes back to us and says, okay, I can build you an array on a piece of land outside the city and charge you nine cents per kilowatt hour. We're saving money as compared to what we're paying now. And I could also put an array on top of a large building, and that will generate enough additional energy that you might be paying 8.9 cents per kilowatt hour instead of nine cents per kilowatt hour. And so it's still going to drive it down, although it might be marginally down. But it's not going to, there's no way it's going to make it go up.
Well, no, down from what we're currently paying. I mean, a ground-mounted array is cheaper than a canopy array over a parking lot, which is more expensive than a, if you were to put one just on the rooftop. So the point I'm getting at is if the option is to add solar capacity through a ground array on cheap property out there somewhere, hopefully environmentally friendly space is chosen, rather than having to burden a parking lot with a canopy that will be more expensive, even though we'll be paying less than what we're paying now, you know, the former option sounds better to me. We're expanding solar options, we're using the best property for that option, and we may be getting the lowest rate of, or the highest rate of return, the lowest rates being paid.
Again, as proposals come back, it wouldn't be mutually exclusive probably, so if we asked them to look at, what's the best package you could give us with just an array outside the city, or array outside the city with some buildings, that's what they would come back with as a package. And so I'm not sure it would be mutually exclusive at this point.
Well, let's hear the rest of it.
Dennis, let me surmise what I'm hearing here, and I'm sort of agreeing with what we just said. It doesn't make any sense to, you know, unless the savings, if you said, you know, went from 10 cents to 5 cents, then you could go to the public and say, you know, we're really ahead of the curve, we're really learning. But if it's just marginally reducing and we're going to put panels everywhere, that would be a tough, I think that's a tough thing to sell. But going outside to a piece of property that's now not doing anything, and they can take advantage, and we can, you know, that makes some sense. And then maybe making some kind of a deal, somebody just mentioned about when we get into roof replacements, or we build new buildings, that's the time to add them. And parking garages seem to be an easy one, because they don't really need to use cranes to get on top, they can build it just like you build it, almost like you build it on land. And so, you know, say parking garages have to have a mandate, just like we do with LEEDs, and, you know, that they, all new parking garages will have some sort of a panel on top. All new roof replacements have to look at the possibility of putting that, and then put that combination together. But I don't see anything, unless you told me you were going to cut our, you know, usage in half or something, that, you know, to go and desecrate, as far as I'm going to cut trees down to put a solar panel, doesn't make any sense to me at all, and using ball fields. So, I mean, that's my take on it. And then technology, over time, will improve, and then the rooftops probably will become much more in vogue because of the new technology. You know, I mean, everything's going so fast now, you know, four minutes from now, we're going to have a new panel out there. So that would be my take on it.
So other buildings we looked at were the Old Town Parking Garage. It's a large square footage. We don't know the structural issues, depending on what, because it wasn't designed to have a canopy. In addition, the other issue that's difficult with our parking garage is access. You would need a crane to lift up some of the panels or to get the panels onsite, and we really only have this as our access point. Because we can't use the railroad, it becomes cost prohibitive to use the railroad side, and then everyone's aware the Y site is actually being constructed here. So this is a very difficult proposition. None of the companies that we discussed really were all that excited about this, based upon the engineering aspect that we don't, we'd have to re-engineer it, but also just based on the site. They're much more inclined to do them when they're new construction, because they can do them at the same time.
But you will find, and this is my experience in the construction business, most buildings like that do have the capacity to put a canopy.
It probably does.
From a structural standpoint, because they, by just to hold the top, you know, platform up, you have to have pretty substantial, so. And I would say 95% of all buildings could put a canopy on top.
And that's just a note for the future, as we approve new construction, as we think about this going forward.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, we should think about this going forward as we approve new construction.
Absolutely.
Public Works is another building that we would look at. Public Works has roughly 30,000 square feet if you're looking at all the rooftops, so it's this section, this section, and we actually have a trailer here now. There would be some potential, but again, we have buses that we often store in this location, this is employee parking. There could be a canopy here. We would need to assess the roof, we haven't currently done that yet, so I don't know what the status is of the roof, that would be something we'd have to look at. The other option that would allow us to use the Public Works facility is this parcel down here, which we own. If we did something on this site, they have discussed that that's potential also. It's not five acres, but it is adjacent to the existing site, so it could be easily tied in to some of the other facilities.
It's also the best sledding hill in the city.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's the sledding hill. That would be popular.
You bring that up.
It's all about options.
Is it a south-facing sledding hill?
Yeah, it is actually, it is a south.
Leave me out of that discussion, please.
So the other part that I was going to ask about is, we actually have a green roof here on the, I guess, the east side of the Public Works facility, so is that the green roof, or is it the other?
There's this section here.
Alright, what about the other side?
There's a little bit here.
There isn't anything on the last side that you haven't pointed at?
This side, no.
No, 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 go to the.
It's shaped like a J, Dennis.
It's shaped like a J, yeah, so it's the long arm from the, yeah, that side.
This is partially not, there's no building, or there's, I'm sorry, there is lot, that includes this area here, I'm sorry. Because this is the storage barn, and these are the bays.
So the bays, but that covers the bays, right?
Total 30,000 square feet for all of this.
Yeah, so that's what I.
Including the fuel station canopy.
Okay.
We can't really do the yard just because of the equipment involved.
No, I understand that, but I think that there's actually quite a bit of roof space and the filling station, fueling station.
This one probably makes a lot of sense. This is difficult here because of the roof penetrations.
Right.
But this section.
But the rest of it, yeah.
And then these sections here.
And there isn't any tree canopy?
Not really nearby, there's a little bit over here, but.
And would the vendors consider this site without obstructing the best sledding hill in Cape Girardeau?
Again, it's all about package, they would. The Public Works facility and the Activity Center are probably the two sites that they would probably pick if we don't provide more direction, just because they're the most square footage that they can get. I mean, you're really dropping to the next site, which is the CPSC Warehouse site, which is actually a pretty good roof, but it's only 15,000 square feet in terms of the roof. So you're almost half as much as the next nearest site, which is the Public Works facility.
So Robert, the other part, problem with the slope is that it directly faces the residential neighborhood area.
But if you're talking about the difference between a 30,000-square-foot roof, where only a portion of it can be used, and a 15,000-square-foot roof where all of it or most of it could be used, then you have to really do those sort of finer calculations before we know for sure which roofs might be better.
Again, this one's better because it has no roof-mounted HVAC system.
Right.
It does have some penetrations for plumbing and ventilation, but that's about it. It is near residential, so that's one of the other.
But as a rooftop?
This probably has the best roof we have in the city.
Right now. As a rooftop issue, why does it matter if it's near a residential as compared to a ground array?
It depends on the slope of the roof, it will be visible to the residential property owners from behind possibly.
Okay.
It does have some issues in terms of setback from the tree canopy. 16th South Summit, this parcel does, property does not work very well. You can see unless we change the roof-mounted mechanical equipment, it occupies the majority of the roof. And because it's a parapet construction, we also have to step back 10 feet from the parapet. So the only thing that works out here is really some type of car port canopy. The roof doesn't really work very well. And in fact, some places you couldn't even get panels, like in these two sections, just because of the setbacks.
Take a parking lot like that, the people on that side of the building will look outside at this glare, and.
It depends on the orientation of the panels.
It's an issue I guarantee you, you don't want to face.
Well, isn't this going to be our primary municipal building? Is that what we're looking at? So it would be the most highly visible, most educationally beneficial site, because people will be looking at the civic building and they'll be seeing solar arrays. That's actually a good thing, depending on whether or not it works.
Depends on how you look at it.
I think that's true for the Activity Center too, because we have a lot of folks who come in and they know it's the city's Activity Center, but I think that's a good point, Robert.
I mean, I don't disagree with what you said, but the unintended consequences is the sun that's reflected off of these things is atrocious, if you've ever seen those big fields. And if you're on the third, fourth, fifth floor of this building, and you're two, and we're building a canopy one floor off the parking garage, there'll be a price to pay.
I think the angle of the arrays is such that they're actually not going to see that, because if you look at where the southern exposure is, they're going to be tilted away from the, from the building that you're talking about. The other thing is, you know, I think we see these, if you go to any major airport in the United States, the awnings now, or the covered areas of the parking lot are covered with solar arrays over the cars. So, you know, I think that that does provide some shelter for those vehicles, it also provides some surface area that you can use to put these panels, and the issue of whether or not there, there's a glare off of them, I guess we'll have to look at a couple of places to see whether that's actually the case. Since they're so dark, I think the glare is going to be minimal. They're not white, they're not reflecting.
I agree with you, it depends on the design. I mean, if it's not designed properly.
We'd have to see, yeah, I think we'll have to see it, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Because most panels are pretty dark, you know, so they're not reflecting a lot of
I'll go over kind of the two other sites that people had questions and then go back. So if you want to know what five acres kind of looks like, this is about 6.5 acres of a ground-mounted.
Where's that?
That is actually, it's not anywhere near here.
Okay.
I was having a hard time finding.
I think we need a picture of the pools, it would actually help.
There's snow on the ground, I think it's Florida.
Let me see if I can find.
So this is the City Hall site. One of the reasons we didn't look at this site is because the roof is actually pretty small in size, and we use this a lot for the book festival and other activities, so any type of ground-mounted or canopy would really impact how this park, Griffith Park and City Hall are used.
You could just drape the tents right over it on the day of the book festival. I'm kidding.
So that was one of the reasons we excluded City Hall, is primarily that reason. And the building itself has so many rooftop-mounted equipment, we're not getting much out of the roof itself.
Right.
And then here is Casey, so we do have a fairly large area in back along here. It does back up to some residential, but really we excluded it from the historic standpoint.
Okay.
So kind of to recap.
You left off one site that you don't have a picture of, which is the Old Town Youth Center, where we actually have a photovoltaic roof right now.
Right.
So it would be good to find out what we've actually learned about having a solar array on a roof of one of our buildings, and whether or not that can be modified for something new, or whether it continues to be a demonstration, which is just simply demonstration. So I don't know if you want to provide a summary of that.
Mainly we didn't look at that, it's because of the roof size, it doesn't have very much square footage, and the portion that's not solar panels is actually a green roof. And it's really was built as a demonstration project. In fact, they use it to show how electricity from solar panels are converted for the students. It doesn't provide a lot of productivity from an electrical standpoint. We could have that reevaluated if that was the direction from the council, but I can tell you that's why we didn't look at it. It produces about just under 20 kilowatts in a day, depending on the sun so far. It mainly was used to get the LEED credits, when LEED was kind of a newer thing, I mean, it's not that to the building, but.
Well, I mean, you know, we got enough LEED credits for this whole building to get a platinum rating, so, you know, I think that in going forward, we need to take advantage of that, that design to see what else we might do. That's a thought, you know, we do have these two sloping roofs that are green roofs, I I mean, it'd be nice at some point to hear what we're learning about energy efficiency of this building, and what, how that energy efficiency can be translated into other efficiencies we have.
And we'll try to have staff look at those issues and bring something back, thanks.
Well, it sounds to me, just sort of in some, after hearing the full presentation and the discussion we've been having, it sounds to me like we need a little more information, and that really is the next phase of the process. If we wanted to go forward with a ground array outside the city and possibly explore two or three sites within the city for roof mounting, that we would need to go back to these vendors and say, that's our guidance, put together some packages so we can see the specific numbers on what we'd be paying, and how much we'd be saving, and how this would work. And that's what, that's what my recommendation would be, is to do that, because I think there seems to be consensus, we do not want to do a ground-based array within the city, but we, to me, it seems like before we, before we dismiss the idea of a couple of rooftop locations in conjunction with a ground array outside the city, we need to find out more about what that would look like and what it would cost.
That's a reasonable approach. That was the direction we were looking for, is what are the options, what were the limitations? And then the second direction is, how would you like to handle kind of the procurement portion? You know, we have the ability to look at the three vendors that we know have existing contracts with other municipalities or counties, or do you want to do a traditional RFP process to say, go full out? I will tell you that the timeline for the full RFP process is much longer than if we would write a contract or a concept contract with one of the other government jurisdictions. But I don't see an issue with us going to all three and saying, what type of package could you put together based upon you all have agreements? Here's what we're looking at, you bring your best package to us, and we still have some competitiveness to that pool, as opposed to going out for a full RFP.
I would assume that we have, under our procurement regulations, certain exceptions that allow us to negotiate or get bids from two or three different vendors on a very specialized kind of product or service. I don't know, maybe Tony has some input on that, but if that's the case, I'd be okay with that. I know there's a lot of vendors out there now who are doing solar, but I don't know how many of them are capable of doing these large-scale solar projects with local governments as opposed to just putting one on one roof here and there of a residential, so.
Well, Tony, Tony, tell us about the procurement.
The procurement rules do allow us for specialized purchases to just act in the best interest of the city, if we've used reasonable due diligence in deciding that, you know, these are people, if there's a timing issue or a technology issue that's unique to a provider, so we could probably make that fit. Of course, I have no idea how many of these providers there are.
Well, Dennis, if we were to go back to these three vendors and with the information which I think Ryan very reasonably laid out with his guidance, and say, show us, you know, what sort of package you could put together, and we take a look at the packages and decide if, we take it from there, essentially. It's no, it's no guarantee we're going to, we're going to go with any of them, that if the, if the savings doesn't justify it, but we take a look at it.
Yeah, we're not committed, we just wanted to make sure you guys were comfortable with that type of process. Most of the contracts we'd be writing had some procurement process already, so other jurisdictions have gone through an open RFP process and then selected a firm based upon some criteria. So I think we're comfortable with how most of the other contracts were developed, and most of them allow riders, some are in Prince George County, some are. and most of them allow riders, um, some are in Prince George County, some are in Montgomery County. So I think all of the providers, some of them actually have similar contracts with different jurisdictions. We're comfortable with that, but we wanted to make sure you were comfortable with that. And that's the direction we'll take, is to say, "We're looking at those providers that could bring an array to us and then also package some type of buildings. And here are our buildings. You tell us what's the best package."
Yeah, I, I like that idea. I think the, uh, the other thing, it'd be nice to see what other municipalities of comparable size are doing already. Rockville, Tacoma Park, um, Bowie, um, I mean, even Annapolis.
I know all the military installations have large arrays as well.
Yeah, they don't have to worry about preserving parkland for, for, uh, as an amenity for our residents. So, and I agree, I don't, I don't want to see us, uh, removing any active or passive parkland from our inventory, uh, for recreation. The only other place that I, I'd like to see, I'm looking at a, at an aerial view of the Robertson Park and the youth center there is also a roof, which is pretty large. At least half of that roof would, uh, faces south, so, uh, I didn't see that on your list of potential, uh, sites.
Partly from the size standpoint, I think.
Yeah. Can I ask another economic-based question?
Sure.
Thank you.
I may not be able to answer.
No, you may not.
So, the, uh, the price that they're giving us, is that based on they're going to sell us all the electricity we can eat for a certain price, or they're going to sell us X number of kilowatt-hours? How does the number work?
It's generally based upon the amount of energy that's produced by the solar arrays. So it's the total amount produced.
So if we're going to produce X thousand kilowatt-hours, they're going to sell us X thousand, up to X thousand at some price? And if we, but if we need more than that, we buy it from the grid at whatever?
In essence, you're still always buying it from the grid.
Right.
It's not like you're turning it back into the building concept, most of them, because that's more, that's more expensive.
I understand.
They would have a cap ultimately, so if we started to use more power for some reason. But we, we have pretty stable facilities, so that's pretty predictable from our standpoint.
I'm just trying to get an idea for why they're looking for a certain number of square feet. Is it because...
I think it's just the value that they have to put into the capital costs.
So they're trying to overcome whatever their upfront cost of building and providing those, these arrays? Because I assume the operating cost of them is pretty negligible relatively.
Pretty minimal. They do have cleanings, um, that they have to go through over that twenty-year period to keep the solar panels functioning properly. Um, but it's mostly the capital cost.
Dennis, Neil brings up another interesting point. You need to ask the question, are we buying our, our present electricity under a state-county contract? Or are we, are we based on volume? In other words, if our volume goes down, do, do our rates go up?
We...
So if we're buying on a larger contract, some...
We buy it on a larger contract. We basically get Montgomery County's price. Correct.
Yeah, I'd hate to see us go up to eleven cents or twelve cents.
Again, it's all cyclical. It could go up or down, but we do have a current contract.
Right, and then part of it is also projecting to the best we, we can where the rates are going to go in five or ten years. Because if we don't do anything with solar or any other alternative, um, um, generation and different costs for that generation, we could sort of project out based on all kinds of factors, his- historical data and all that, what's the growth rate of the kilowatt-hour cost for, um, you know, what we pay, you know, five years from now, ten years from now, fifteen years from now, versus locking in a rate with an alternative provider? And I assume that the rate we'd lock in, whatever it is, would still have some growth built into it, but it might be a smaller growth rate than the growth rate we'd get with our standard provider now.
Probably so. Yes, correct. In addition, you know, as we do, um, efficiency measures and lighting and stuff, we actually reduce the amount of electricity we're pulling.
But that's true regardless of who's providing the electricity. Right?
All right, do we have any other comments before we go to the public on this?
Just a, a quick question on the procurement method. Do we, do we have the ability to do like a sources sought as part of our market research? To say, you know, here's what we want, here's some companies we're going to, within thirty days, come back and say if this is something you're interested in?
That would be the approach we would take. It's the question of do we go outside the three that we're asking for? Or, and open it ended? We have to do a little bit more due diligence then, because we have to determine whether the company has the capacity to complete the project. I would say all three firms that we've talked to have a longstanding track record of completing larger projects for municipal governments. And there are a lot of other firms that probably don't meet that criteria.
I assume if you talk to, you know, Rockville, Bowie, you talk to Annapolis, and everyone's giving you the same companies, you know? That's pretty much your market research there, right?
These are the three major companies that are providing the service.
So how much are we spending on electricity today?
I, I can't give you... Ron, come, come to the mic, please.
Might as well sit there.
I, I can't give you a total cost, but, uh, last year we, we had five point six megawatts in total power of total electricity. And to go back to your question, um, market and industry rates look like, uh, electricity is going to grow somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent over the next ten years, due to the number of coal-fired, uh, generation plants coming offline and the number of nuclear power plants that are coming offline, since there's not been a, a new power plant, nuclear power plant, uh, built in the United States in the last twenty-five years. So actually, electricity by itself is going to go up, uh, twenty-five, thirty percent. That's why a lot of municipalities and, and we are looking for other alternatives, how, how to switch over to natural gas for like our backup generators, such like that.
Yeah, so to overuse a term that's already been over, overused, it's essentially looking to try to bend the cost curve over time, over the next twenty years.
Yeah, but I'm worried about the other cost curve, right? Having, again, coming out of the computer industry, where computer chips became faster and cheaper based on Moore's Law, which said that the number of transistors doubled every year and a half. For whatever reason, solar power seems to be following the same curve in terms of becoming more efficient, uh, generating more, a higher percentage efficiency of electricity at a lower cost as time goes by. So what I'm worried about here is we lock in nine cents a kilowatt-hour hurrah, and five years from now, you could buy solar panels and get three cents a kilowatt-hour. And we've locked ourselves in for what turns out to be a cheaper price for two years and a higher price for eighteen years.
Well, it's only a higher price as compared to that new technology. It's still going to be a cheaper price as compared to the standard offer, or, or what we're paying now.
Well, maybe.
Most of them...
Maybe.
Because if demand comes down due to more and more people getting solar, then you don't need all these new coal-fired plants and, or whatever, you know, I mean, it's...
I think that's a good point.
That's a future I like. If, if, if we're satisfying in twenty years our energy needs all on solar.
For what it's worth, I mean, it's, you know, it's all, it's all educated predictions, but we don't really know what's going to happen tomorrow. But for what it's worth, a lot of the experts, as you say, are saying that, you know, the, the rate of the increase of, uh, the standard service cost is going to be whatever, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent. And if the rate of increase is locked in for twenty years at less than a percent or less than two percent through an alternative provider, whether it's solar or something else, that's a fairly good gamble. I, I mean, again, it is, it is a gamble. Nobody knows what the cost is going to be tomorrow.
But at this point, we don't know what the gamble is, because we don't know what the deal...
Right.
That's on the, there's no deal on the table yet.
That's right.
So, so I think as a first step, to just go out, even if we look at this less as, uh, strict procurement and, and more as fact-finding essentially, what could we be eligible for with this configuration that works for us? I think that, that it makes total sense to, to find that out.
Yeah, you have to start somewhere, because everything we touch, cars, televisions, computers, all get better. And, and that's a standard, but it's a given. But locking yourself into twenty years, there's some issues there we can talk about, you know, and say, whether we have an act, you know, some sort of a clause or escape clause, or a buyout clause, or, you know, a new technology clause, or, you know, they can get involved, you know, the, some of those discussions will obviously have to take place at some point in time, so.
So my, my request, just real quick, just to, just to wrap up the, the economic questions, is that just, I would like to see when you come back with whatever it is that, uh, that comes out of the guidance, is to have our, perhaps our finance department also come back and give us some sort of cost-benefit analysis on this sort of project, right?
We will do something similar.
Okay.
To give you a perspective, only about point four percent of the electricity in the U.S., point four percent is generated by solar at this particular point in time. So...
But I, I also read a report that says that at the rate of, uh, efficiency improvement in solar electricity, we might not need a power grid in twenty years, so twenty, that's...
That'd be great.
That's, it's an interesting, you know, looking at the power in this thing compared to a, a computer twenty years ago. And it's, you know, you wouldn't want one of those old four eighty-six machines anymore, right?
Correct. And it's potentially possible. It would probably take more than twenty years, but...
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that's a great point. And I would want to see those, uh, finance numbers as well once we have more detail from the vendor proposals, so that we can really...
Crunch down the numbers, some trends.
Yeah, we can say, you know, based on the fact that we, we use five point six megawatts times whatever our rate was versus times what the new rate being offered is for however many megawatts in reduction, or kilowatts in reduction, that would be what, what our real savings would be as a, as a real detailed estimate. And I know you all will bring that back to us, but, you know, I, I think it's a fair point. But I also think on the, you know, on the improvements in technology, but I also think we shouldn't, you know, wait around forever to do something in the hope that, you know, at some point, we're going to say the technology is good enough.
That's always the problem in a declining cost market, right? Is you, you're tempted to wait for next year's cool, cooler, cheaper thing, right? I totally get that. So if we have the numbers that says we're, we're going to lock in, you know, savings for some number of years and, and the out-years, it's riskier. Well, the out-years are always riskier, so I'm comfortable. Just like to see. I, I would hope that we're saving a lot of money in the, you know, somewhere in the near term.
Yeah, great. I bought a new car this year, knowing next year they're going to be better.
Well, knowing next year that the base price is still going to be pretty much the same. There's one thing that's pretty constant. Even the products get better, but, uh, and you get more for your money, but you're still laying out the same amount of money as you would the previous year. So, you know, you're trading efficiency for, for that same price, I guess.
Do you, do you have your guidance?
Yes.
Well, let me, let me invite the public. If, if there's anyone in the public, we don't have a lot of people here today, but yes, we have someone who'd like to speak. Uh, Dennis will bring the microphone to you, darling.
I just had a couple of questions. One, I was really kind of waiting for Dennis to answer. How much is it...
Darling, hold that microphone.
How much is it that Gaithersburg has to spend? How much is the upfront cost that Gaithersburg has to kick out in order to make sure that what we are investing initially, we're going to get our money back? So if it takes twenty years to get a rate of return and you're only saving a doc... I mean, I've been accounting for a long time, so I was really out, waiting for that. The second question was, I thought I heard Dennis say that the vendors are not going to tell you which buildings they're going to, where they're going to do the location until you agree to do something. Thought it was the first thing I heard. There's only two questions. Does need a little clarification on that.
Okay, thanks, darling. So to, uh, to the question of our initial outlay, Dennis, it's my understanding that we wouldn't have one.
There is no initial cash outlay. Again, it's all based upon the rate of return that the, the vendors would receive in terms of what we're paying for electricity and they're getting back paid. In terms of, they would probably identify sites for us. They just weren't willing to identify sites until we have some commitment that we're willing to at least engage and initiate the projects in terms of looking at what the cost-return is. They will come back with a package. I'm not sure they will necessarily say, "Okay, here's the pinpoint location," because they may not want to disclose that, but they may be able to tell us the general vicinity. I haven't had specific conversations with them about that.
But Dennis, I think it'd be important to let them know upfront that we want, ultimate, we, ultimately, we're going to have the say about which... I mean, they could give us sort of a, a wishlist of our, of our buildings, but we should have the ultimate say over whether they get to do one or not.
Yes, and when they do the cost analysis, they will be looking at specific sites. I'm just not sure, without the commitment, they would say, "Okay, this site's located in, you know, northwest Montgomery County" or someplace like that.
I don't know that we care that much.
And then say, it's roughly five acres, here's the rate of return. And then they would say, "Okay, here are the buildings we would recommend that you do." And then that would be our choice whether we would choose that vendor or not.
Okay.
I'm not sure I can require them to do this particular building. I can give them guidance. Um, like we've talked about already, we've talked about making it be something that was fairly visible. So the Activity Center or, um, you know, even Public Works is fairly visible in terms of what people drive by, but really those are the better sites.
And I would say, in addition to that, and I don't know if others disagree, but in addition, I would like to see at least one or two sites that are fairly visible. But if there's one or two other sites in addition to that that are efficient, that would be good to add on as well, I'd be okay with hearing that as part of the proposal.
That's more important to me, yeah.
Yeah, we will be giving them the complete list of buildings. We will not be parsing it out from our standpoint. We will go back and say, "Here are our buildings. You tell us what works."
Okay.
From your perspective.
Do we have anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make one final comment.
Go right ahead.
I am really excited to hear that we're doing the one hundred percent renewable energy credits. I would love to see the city promoting that fact much more assertively.
I agree.
Any other comments from anyone here?
That was a good presentation.
It was. Thank you very much, Dennis.
Good discussion.
Yep. All right. So, um, Tony, anything from you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Our next regular meeting is next week on Tuesday, because Monday is Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday. So, um, this week, uh, just as a note, we will, uh, I think most of us, some of us, will be in Annapolis for the opening day reception and to start, uh, our discussions with our legislators about the, or continue our discussion about the city's legislative agenda. And we have some hot topics arisen over the last week or two, which they will be hearing about. Uh, so until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.